I'm going to read a welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We would like to thank the administrative team and all the staffing students at Eureka High School for being gracious hosts for our meeting this evening. Thank you also to the ambassadors who are here from schools in the Eureka Quadrant to assist with greeting and signing on our guests. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. The Rockwood Board of Education is committed to the safety and security of all of our students, staff, parents, and patrons. To that end, we are requiring face covering and social distancing at our meeting tonight. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated in advance. We have reports to consider and business to conduct that are critical to the functioning of our school district. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. Calling out verbal aggressions, inappropriate language, or name-calling is not acceptable. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board may take a recess until such time the audience is appropriate. If appropriate behavior continues, if inappropriate behavior continues by the individuals, they may be asked to leave the meeting. If that audience, if the audience becomes so inappropriate in their behavior that we cannot conduct our business, the board reserves the right to adjourn the meeting. This Board of Education meeting is live streamed for the community's convenience. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. YouTube reserves the right to monitor and block inaccurate and misleading content. The process is beyond the control of the Rockwood School District. We want everyone to have an ability to hear the business of the district, reports presented in the comments of everyone who is here to speak. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. Thank you. Okay, let's go with the 4.02 approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 4.03, approval of Board of Education meeting minutes for October 21st, 2021.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is getting a little easier. Okay, now we're going to move to superintendent and board comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to begin tonight by extending my and our sincere thoughts and sympathy to members of our Marquette and school community who are experiencing extreme difficulty during these times. In Rockwood, we are continually striving to maintain a multi-tiered support system for students, staff, and community members in need. We have caring, dedicated, trained professionals in the district who are willing and able to address the needs of members of our school communities and connect with them when necessary resources are needed. We will continue to wrap our arms around each other and work together to heal as a community. This past Thursday, November 11th, was Veterans Day, and schools all over the Rockwood School District found unique ways to honor the veterans in various communities. Whether through school displays and projects, luncheons or parades, Rockwood students and staff celebrated those who have selfishly served our country. Thank you, veterans, especially Dr. Kinder, for all that you mean to our students, staff members, and families in Rockwood. This week, Rockwood joins school districts across the nation also to celebrate American Education Week. From the classroom teacher to the child nutrition services employee and countless others, we celebrate public education and honor the individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every Rockwood student receives quality education. We're proud to enjoy the quality of our thousands of staff members to do whatever it takes to ensure that all of our students realize their potential. Specifically, Baldwin Elementary was selected as a recipient of more than $44,000 in supplies through Office Depot's program, Depot Difference. The program takes a portion of the sales of 24 regional stores over a three-month period and donates it to benefit a local school, Baldwin Elementary. This past weekend, nearly 30 Baldwin staff members participated in a shopping spree to use the donated money on classroom supplies, furniture, and technology to benefit their students. We really want to thank Office Depot for that opportunity. Finally, tonight, with the Thanksgiving holiday approaching, I just want to make sure and take a moment to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and restful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Any board comments? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent of the agenda items. That's the matter.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're at 7.01. Resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021. I need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021, of the Rockwood R6 School District, St. Louis County, Missouri.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, good news for you this evening. We had our bond sale today and got some very good results of our refunding of our 2016 bonds. In fact, the numbers came in better than what we had provided to you at the last meeting. Got some folks here from our bond counsel and our financial advisor that I have come to speak to the details of it, but if you guys want to come on up. But just in summation, we had a great team that put this package together with our bond counsel, who we worked with to make sure that we're abiding by state and federal requirements. We made the state, meet the state audit requirements and all the IRS issues that go along with that. And Jason Terry and his team at Gilmore Bell walk us through that very nicely. And on the flip side of that, our financial advisor, Tom Pizarkwitz and Brad Wegman, who are here this evening, work with us so that we put this package together that's competitive. It also involves working with the reaffirmation of our rating with S&amp;P, so we had to go through that process again. I'm happy to report that S&amp;P reaffirmed our AAA rating. Only four school districts in the state of Missouri have AAA. Rockwood is one of those four, and less than 100 across the entire U.S. So it's a very high distinction. We work closely with LJ Hart and team for that. They put together a great package. We had real good bid results this morning that I'll have them share with you. So all in all, the process has gone really well, and we were able to save a lot of money for our patrons in the district through this process. So turn it over to Jason and/or Tom.
Yes, thank you again. I'm Tom Pizarkwitz with LJ Hart and Company. So what we're looking at here, subject to your approval, we can lock in savings of $4,138,710 by refinancing the 2016 bonds. And we'd actually shorten the final repayment period from 2036 to 2033, and we can push some principal payments up due to the strength of your debt service fund. And that fund can only be used to repay bonds. As Paul mentioned, we took bids this morning from underwriters across the nation. We received eight, and so we're effectively lowering your interest rate from 3% to the true interest cost, that's the measure we use to get the best bid, down to 1.426%. So more than cut, cutting your rate in half. The new bonds will be callable February 1, 2027. Now, I don't think you're going to be able to refinance them again, but certainly you will be able to pay off, pay them off early if you have excess funds in the debt service fund and save additional interest expense. Paul alluded to the AAA rating. I do want to comment on just some points they put in their report. They identified the stable local economy, very strong finances, supported by increasing property valuations, conservative budgeting, and good financial management, and then low overall debt per capita. So that's a lot to be proud of there.
Good evening. I'm Jason Terry from Gilmore and Bell. You have me to thank for the litany of documents that you've had in your, in your board packets. The most pertinent document this evening is the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the bonds. That document was finalized this morning. You had a draft of that last week. With the bond sale this morning, we could include the final interest rates, the final maturity schedule, the redemption provisions that Tom mentioned, and the, the purchase or the sale of the bonds by the district to the, the lowest bidder or highest bidder, I guess, however you want to look at it. And in your case, it'd be the, the lowest interest rate. And so the, the resolution before you approves all of those terms of the bonds. If ever there's a question about the terms of the bonds, that's the document that we'll refer to. Like to thank Paul and Dan. Believe it or not, they make our jobs, I'm sure I can speak for Tom, a lot easier. And, you know, as boring as these documents may be, it's, it's a joy to be able to work with them and the district. Making our job easier hopefully translates to, you know, a better job for the district. So if there's any questions about the documents included in the package or the resolution before you this evening, that's what I'm hearing.
Questions? Discussion?
If you have trouble sleeping, feel free to crack these open and...
All right. Pretty exciting. It is, it is good. Okay. All in favor? All in approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving forward. Okay. Next, we're going to hear from Kevin O'Malley from School Executnet. He's going to update us on the superintendent search. Very exciting.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out to see me. I'm sure you're here just to see me and, and enjoy the superintendent search progress update that I'll share with the board and with the community this evening. My name is Kevin O'Meara, close to O'Malley, but Kevin O'Meara. And I spent a lot of time here in the last couple of months, meeting with parents and community members, staff, teachers, administrators, and my favorite students. So I have a better sense now of what the community at large is looking for in a superintendent. And I'd like to share my report in a PowerPoint. I also have hard copies that I will share with Janet here to share with the Board of Education that's much more detailed and full of statistics. I will also send to the board president this evening or tomorrow morning, a electronic version that would encourage the board to display on the website so the community at large has a sense of kind of where the, where the direction is as far as recruitment and interviewing of superintendent candidates goes from here. So can we, who's doing slides? Oh, I do it here? Wow. Yeah, that's awesome. Okay, here we go. Okay. So the board asked us, asked my firm to conduct focus groups with a wide variety of stakeholders, conduct an online survey questionnaire to gather input from staff, parents, community members, and students, and can then create a profile for the ideal candidate based on information gleaned from these conversations and from these survey results. The board and consultants could use this information to screen and conduct interviews with the candidates. I would encourage the board to use this information to screen. The profile report may be used to develop interview questions for the candidates, so I would encourage you to, to, when we meet in January, to consider this profile for that purpose. The Board of Education may use this profile to find out more about the thinking of constituents within the district. And I think that that's valuable information for a board to use outside of the board search process. The candidates that I will share this profile with and the people that we're recruiting and the community may use this profile report about this, to find out more about the strengths and remaining challenges here at Rockwood. So the focus groups, we had 95 attendees over two days and nights of, of interaction with me. The questionnaire, the survey was given for about two weeks there, and we had over almost, almost 4,000 responses. I would not consider the sampling methodology to be scientific in nature. Percentages are rounded in the reports and the, and the numbers you'll see this evening. We asked four basic questions during the focus groups and open forums. What are your, what are the district's strengths? What are the things that would attract a candidate to come here to Rockwood to, to be a superintendent? What are the district's challenges? What are some things that still need to be overcome by the district moving forward towards the next step in the, in the district's growth? What should the priorities be for the new superintendent? Where should he or she spend their first year concentrating on their efforts? And what are the most important qualities and skills and experiences that you're looking for your next superintendent? Those were the two, four basic questions we asked. We had, again, 10 focus groups with 95 attendees, and the strengths are listed here, and I'm not going to read them out loud, but you can kind of, if I can step out, I can see the screen better. The number one point I think that everyone should take away from the strengths portion of the, of the focus groups are that almost every single respondent showed great pride in this school district, that you've got a lot to be proud of. Strong teaching, strong administrators, strong parents that created a close-knit community. I got to tell you, when I walk into school buildings here in the district, there's not one person who doesn't welcome me. Everyone says, what, you know, Dr. O'Meara, what, what can we do for you today? Parents, community members, students especially, so welcoming, so close-knit, so tight. You've got a lot to be proud of there. Many parents and teachers indicated they specifically chose to live in this district because of its, because of its schools. There's a climate of growth and improvement district-wide. Everyone wants this place to grow and continue to grow. The other strengths here are multitudinal. It's well-resourced. You've got great finances, especially with all that thick, boring paperwork we just saw. The students are very involved. There's lots to get involved in. There's many opportunities for students to grow inside and outside the classroom. The buildings and grounds are well-maintained and clean and welcoming. Teachers, administrators, and parents praise the engaged and committed parent group and community at large. You're all very involved in the students here and in, in the growth of this district. And that doesn't mean you don't have challenges. You do, but you're very involved. Many parents noted the appreciation of the district's response and the board's response to the COVID-19 during the epidemic and pandemic, which continues to thwart us, and it's something we continue to go through. Students feel supported by teachers expressing confidence and the teachers' willingness to provide feedback, demonstrate kindness, and listen to multiple points of view. And lastly, a growth mindset is, is, is part of who you are as a school district. Everyone wants this, this set of students and the students behind them to, to grow and learn to the best of their potential. What are some challenges? Well, a high-achieving district will inevitably experience pressure to raise and maintain those test scores, which are one lens by which you can view the efficacy of a, of a school district. And that challenge is, is sometimes hard to, to overcome. As experienced by most schools throughout the nation, topics associated with COVID-19 response have created divides that must be mended by the new leader. The new leader, whomever that person is, needs to bring people back together. That's who you are as a community, and that needs to be something that the new leader puts his or her mind to. A strong desire to diversify the teaching and administrative staff is important to many that I spoke with. Continuing to attract, continuing to attract and retain the most qualified and talented individuals throughout the district is, is greatly important. And after a period of listening and reflecting and getting to know the culture and climate of the district, the superintendent needs to examine, needs to examine what programs and practices should stay and where the district maybe needs to, to, to put more resources. The expectation of close collaboration with teachers, administrators, and the Board of Education places demands on a superintendent's time that may be greater than in some districts. Rockwood is 100%. You're all in when you become a superintendent here or when you're on staff here. You've got to continue to consider the impacts of the pandemic on students, staff, families, and community, and implement academic and emotional supports where needed, as we, as we all have experienced for the past couple of years. So focus areas in year one, they're, they're listed here. I'll make sure that these are posted on the district website, but there are about 10 or 12 here that you can re-review. Desired skills and characteristics. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be. The new superintendent needs to be someone who can build, and in some cases, rebuild relationships and trust within the Rockwood community. The person needs to be able to include all stakeholders in moving forward and towards completion of the existing strategic plan. This ability to build and rebuild relationships, as far as I'm concerned, I heard from every single person in every single group. It's needed here. The new superintendent should be a proven leader with specific accomplishments, as well as being hardworking, proactive, transparent, visionary, and strategic. Experience in the classroom and leadership at the building level are important to many constituents. In other words, they'd like to have somebody who's a leader here, who was a teacher at some point in their career, was also a principal, assistant principal, and so forth during their, during their rise to being a superintendent. The new superintendent needs to have a deep knowledge of curriculum and instruction. Those are very, very important considerations. After all, school districts are teaching and learning environments. He, he or she needs to know how to motivate and manage high-performing teams and use the talents of each individual. Clearly identify and focus on a common vision for the future. Everyone needs to know in which direction this boat is rowing. Demonstrate openness, accessibility, thoughtfulness, likability, and responsiveness. If you can't come talk to this person, what good are they? They need to be able to come into a room and make everyone feel comfortable. That's extremely important for the superintendent here at Rockwood. This person needs to understand finance, especially school finance, business operations, and board governance. It's very, very important in a large district like this. And the last one was something that was highlighted through all the groups. A key element of being successful is great communication, both from a kind of verbal, non-verbal perspective, and also from a written and even media-centric perspective. The new superintendent should be able to inform and inspire others through eloquent speaking, skillful writing, and effective use of the multimedia. The next set of bullet points are things that you're looking for as well. You can kind of review these on your own, but, but these are very, very important. I'll make sure these are on the website. I don't want to take too much more of your time. As far as the survey responses are concerned, we had 3,774 responses. The vast majority of those were parent or community members, I'm sorry, parents. The next largest group was staff members. Educational, educational strengths revealed by the survey, the largest one was the quality of teaching staff, and the next largest one was challenging and stated our curriculum throughout, throughout the, the elementary, middle, and high schools. The rest of it listed there. The challenges, one of the challenges that came up on, on top was about a third of the respondents said the quality of leadership needs to be approved, improved. Instruction tailored to individual students, gifts or needs, needs to be looked at by, by, identified by 29% of the respondents. And then the district's understanding and support of diversity needs to be something that's on the front burner. Organizational or managerial strengths, the clean and well-maintained schools, every single person identified that as a strength, followed by student safety and communication with parents and community. The other one, as far as challenges are concerned, staff morale, trust and relationships that still needs to be attended to. Staff morale at some places, at some locations, what the district is, is something that needs to be attended to. And then communication with parents and community needs to be improved. Priorities, student growth and achievement. Obviously, this is a, is a, a learning community, and that learning needs to continue to grow. Social, emotional health of children and 21st century skills were the next two listed there by respondents to the survey. What am I, what am I pointing? Okay, here we go. Characteristics of skills from the survey respondents. This person needs to be trustworthy and displays courage and integrity, not afraid to own a decision, has a clear vision for leading our schools and the district, holds others and himself or herself accountable, builds good teams, brings out the best in everybody that, that, that is with that person, and is child-centered. Okay, so now we got to the fun part, the profile. So looking at, at all the information from the survey, the focus groups, the open forums, the conversations, and I've had many conversations with staff members, with parents, with community members through telephone or email or whatever. This, this is the profile for your new leader. This is what you're looking for. And these are in no particular order. The first one listed is not more important than the second one and so forth. So this new superintendent should be a person who possesses a deep knowledge of best practices in teaching and learning. The superintendent is child-centered, innovative, confident, and resilient. Need to be strong. You need to have a backbone for this position. This person is an exceptionally strong, inspirational, and empathetic leader with proven skills and experience in building trusting relationships and unifying district constituencies. We need to bring people back together again. Makes decisions based on what is best for students. Keeps students at the center of planning and decision-making and communicates decisions with clarity, reason, and empathy after considering input from all stakeholders. This person needs to possess a genuine, warm, caring, personable, transparent, flexible, and approachable personality, and is skilled at building trust and maintaining, maintaining a positive climate and culture. This person passionately embraces the current traditions and values of the district, including a focus on the well-being of children and every aspect of their growth and development. There's a great tradition and history here at Rockwood. This person needs to understand that and, and build on that. This person uses a proven track record of success as an educator and a leader to positively impact student achievement and district outcomes, building strong teams that focus on the mission and vision of the district. This person models active listening, encourages and supports stakeholder voice and input, and fosters a collaborative process for shared decision-making, showing an openness, transparency, transparency, and willingness to give credit to others. This person needs to be humble. He's a, he, he or she is a thoughtful but resolute leader who makes well-informed decisions and demonstrates the fortitude to stand by them. This person exhibits excellent communication skills, builds on existing methods of and strategies to ensure timely and transparent communication that keeps internal and external stakeholders informed and supports a positive image of the district. Communicates a clear vision for the future of the school district, inspires others to act in accordance with that vision, establishes and maintains high expectations for all students and staff. This person works effectively with this Board of Education, aligning decision-making with this district's strategic plan and pursuing those objectives with passion, transparency, and persistence. Prioritizes the recruitment, training, and retention of highly effective teachers and leaders guided by clear human resource practices focusing, focuses on hiring staff who are diverse in race, gender, and background. Demonstrates understanding and commitment to issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion, focusing on the academic and social-emotional development of all students and inclusion of all families in school life. Everyone should feel welcome here. Possesses, possesses successful experience as a teacher and building-level leader, understands curriculum, teaching, and learning, and promotes instructional methods that are engaging and supportive of high academic achievement. Values the unique needs of every student and allocates resources for programs in and out of the classroom that supports students' academic growth, personal and social-emotional growth, including the development of creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills, the skills that are talked about, 21st century learning. Displays skills in fiscal management and knowledge of legal requirements affecting the district. Successfully forges close connections with local and state leaders and is familiar with national trends in education. And this person needs to become immersed in the life of the Rick Rockwood schools and the community, maintaining a strong presence in classrooms, at activities, in community events, and at the local grocery store. This person needs to be part of this community. to be part of this community. Next steps, just to give you and the board a sense of what our next steps are. We will conduct interviews and reference checks using the new superintendent profile after the closing period for the applications, which as at this point are due to close on December 17. We will recommend a semifinal slate to the Board of Education in January. The board conducts first interviews and chooses finalists. The board will hold second interviews with typically three finalists, and candidate presentations are going to be done during that time as well. And then the board makes final selection of the finalists, conducts reference checks, negotiates the contract, and the new superintendent begins duties on July 1 of 2022. Happy to take any questions the board may have at this point.
Thanks, Kevin. I mean, that's a lot of great information, so we appreciate everything you've done.
I've got some more boring paperwork for you.
We'll take it.
I'm going to give this to Janet, but I want to make sure everybody gets it. This is a very lengthy report on all the data that I've collected and used to form this profile. I got to tell you, and I got to tell you, this is a great place. It's welcoming. People are friendly, high-performing. This is a place where a good superintendent should be, and you're going to get your person. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your help in making that happen.
Thanks, guys. I had fun. Not over yet.
Oh, it's going to be a busy, busy couple of months coming up. May I please have a motion that the Board of Education approve the master plan for professional learning as a fundamental framework for the Rockwood Professional Development Program for 2021, 2022?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
I think we're going to have Dr. Renee Trottier and Donette Whisker come talk to us.
Good evening. Good evening to the community as well. My name is Dr. Renee Trottier. I'm the Director of Learning Development here in Rockwood. And then this is Donette Whisker. She is the Coordinator of Professional Learning. The master plan is typically part of consent agenda, and then we come to present on years where there might be new information to share. And we have a new program this year called microcredentia for teachers. So we came to explain that and give you an update on our current program. So I'm going to let Donette give you an update on our current program. I'm going to try to work the clicker, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about microcredentials.
So a few of our programs that have been ongoing for a while that we're particularly proud of are, you know, even in the midst of the pandemic, we were still able to offer teachers learning over the summer. We still, I think, because I'm in charge of it, but one of the best new teacher induction and beginning teacher programs in the state. We have teachers who come from other places and raved to us about the support we provide to them, mentors, curriculum writing. We have two leadership programs that we run for teacher leaders and aspiring principals, Administrator PD. I was really excited. In the last two years, we've added a lot of support staff training. So, and a lot of that we've been able to do by using technology, using the Canvas platform. You know, even in the midst of all the changes over the last few years, we have, with the assistance of Learning Support Services and our teachers, really been able to meet people where they are. We have programs we call PD and our PJs where teachers can do professional learning at home on their own time. They have a lot of choices, and they're kind of able to pick what meets their needs. So whether you're a veteran or a brand-new teacher, we've kind of got something for everyone. So I'm really pretty proud of those things that we're doing. In addition, one of the things that we started last year, one of the things we started last year, after getting input from parents and teachers and looking at best practices in professional learning, is we started our full-day PD. So, starting last year, even in the midst of everything going on, and then continuing into this year, we have four days of full-day PD. And during those days, there's kind of three pieces to that. And one is the Way Forward cohorts. And those are where teachers choose a strand that they want to learn about. And all of those strands are connected to our district comprehensive school improvement plan. So it's all tied back to the work we want to do as a district, but then teachers also have choice. They then join a cohort of other teachers and learn with them throughout the year. In addition, on that day, they have the opportunity to work on curriculum implementation, and they've also got time within their buildings and working with their PLCs. So it's a very, when students, I know, we know that it's a hardship sometimes for parents to find childcare, things to do with their children on those days, but our teachers are working very hard and learning lots of things that are benefiting those students in the classroom. And again, just as I stated, all of these continuing programs and that full-day PD all connect directly back to the Way Forward and this plan. So everything we do is connected to that work. So a few things that we have kind of had to adjust this year, as everybody has pivoted in so many ways. We are not utilizing substitute teachers for meetings. So we've had to move meetings to the evening, sometimes via Zoom, or we've done things asynchronously through Canvas. Again, teachers kind of learning on their own time. Curriculum writing, which often would have used subs, is now been pulled into either full-day PD. Some of that work moved into the summer or after school. So teachers have been really flexible with, they still want the learning, they want that learning to continue, so how can we make that work? Our Rockwood Learning Council and Professional Development Committee, again, teachers are stepping up and meeting after school, after working all day. So obviously, we're not meeting as often, and we've really tried to pare down that business. The other thing that has been kind of a challenge is that we haven't been able to have release time for new teachers and mentors. So we've had to kind of be creative about how we're supporting our new teachers. We're utilizing our instructional coaches at the elementary level, our coordinators at the secondary level, so really making sure that our new teachers still have that support. So those are just some of the adjustments and things that we've made. Programs we've tried to continue, we really have been focused on maintaining quality. And with that in mind and always increasing quality, Renee's going to talk to you about microcredentia.
Thank you, Donette. I'm really excited to share a new opportunity for Rockwood teachers to earn recognition for the expertise that they learn as they work through professional learning. So professional learning is planned by, we have a Professional Development Committee, which every school in our state does, every district does, but it is representatives of teachers from all buildings, along with a few administrator representatives, parent representation, and NEA representation as well. And so that group's been talking about microcredentia actually for quite a few years. And this year, we've partnered with Human Resources and the RNEA to bring this to our teachers. So microcredentials are very common in the business world. I'm sure you've heard of microcredentials. Google offers them, and a lot of businesses do. And school districts across the country have been implementing microcredentials to develop, to recognize that expertise developed by their teachers. So, am I pointing it to the right wheel? Let me try that again. Okay, sorry. So a microcredential really is just a short competency-based recognition of learning mastered. It takes a teacher about 15 clock hours to earn a microcredential. They can stack microcredentials in the same area of study. So if they want to focus on character and well-being and become an expert in that area, they can stack multiple microcredentials to go from a foundational knowledge to a more specialized knowledge. And the badge is actually just that symbol that denotes the microcredential earned that you might have seen in the business world. So our purpose and really our goal with microcredentials is we really want to provide, our teachers, to Donette's point, we have, we hire experienced teachers from other districts, and we also hire new teachers right out of college. And at different points in their career, they all have different needs. They teach different subject areas, different levels of students. They're at a different place in their career. And so we want high-quality personalized professional learning for teachers that impacts the learning with their kids. If it doesn't impact the learning in the classroom, then there's really not a lot of point in having meetings for teachers. And so we also want to recognize the expertise developed by teachers, and there is a financial incentive provided for teachers with that master's degree to develop competencies aligned with the teacher evaluation instrument and our school improvement plan. So the incentives, the financial compensation is just, the pay scale didn't change. So there's nothing that changed about it there. So right now, as you know, teachers move on the pay scale, they earn their boucher's degree, they earn another 15 or 30 hours after their vouchers, then they move when they earn their masters, then they earn plus 15 or plus 30 hours after their masters. And so none of that's changed. They still move primarily through college credits, and that they get through local universities, but they also can move with Rockwood microcredentials. So to that point, we incentivize the learning that's connected to our school improvement plan, and that's connected to our teacher evaluation instrument. So it's just interchangeable. They can move with 13 college credit hours and two Rockwood microcredentials, 10 Rockwood microcredentials, and five college credit hours. So whatever works, that combination works, it's just interchangeable. So that's how they move on that pay scale. One microcredential is one hour of college credit. And then finally, that badge just shows that expertise. So what we focus on, while I said it, it takes about 15 hours, so it's a, it's a pretty intense experience for them to earn a microcredential. It's not really about seat time or hours. It's more about demonstrating mastery of the content and evidence of implementation. And so those are really the two things that we focus on to move in those microcredential opportunities. So you have, and it's also public on board docs, I think it's Appendix B in the master plan, this is the full microcredential plan where you can see how it works and all that good stuff. Did you have any questions at all? Yeah, go ahead, Timmy.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I have a couple of questions about the microcredentials. One is if they're getting district microcredential credit, then they are not applying for reimbursement like they would for college credit.
Correct. Yeah, there's no cost to the teacher to earn a Rockwood.
The district of the PD that we're already providing.
Correct.
Would there be teachers that would be taking those same courses for non-credential?
Absolutely. That's a great point. So anyone can earn a microcredential, even if they're right out of college and they don't have their masters yet. The financial incentive only comes into play with that master's plus 30. Anyone can earn it. And so to your point, we might have professional learning that's going on, so like trauma-informed care, for example, is one of those. And within that group, we probably, the majority is probably not taking it for the microcredential. Those that are, are doing additional reflections that show that they've mastered the content and that how they've implemented that in the classroom.
That was my question. That leads me to my next question, is that is there any kind of competency assessments that show that they have mastered that level of those 15 hours or whatever they're taking?
Yes. So there, we have a common template that people who are offering a microcredential opportunity fill out. It's kind of, it's like a college syllabus, basically, you know, that we would approve. And it is, that's what they have to show. So how are they going to show that they know it, and how are they going to show that they've implemented what they've learned?
And one more question. So are you partnering with any universities to offer some specialized, like, credits and things that they, for the district to partner with the district to offer those?
Absolutely. We still have the same partnerships with our universities at, with our new teachers. We're still actually running college credit instead of microcredentials because they primarily do not have a masters. And sometimes that college credit can work toward their masters. And so some, we actually have both in that sense. And then I know the universities are also making some changes too. So Lindenwood University, for example, has a microcredential opportunity, the NEA. I mean, there's a lot of organizations that have those. It also allows us to, you know, we tend to provide professional learning out of our department that impacts all teachers, but, you know, computer science teachers have special needs, and they have special certifications. So like, we are also able to offer some personalized opportunities for more specialized content areas.
Partner with universities. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you bet.
Dr. Trottier.
Yes, sir.
Several quick questions. This is a new program? Has it started yet?
It started, yes, in October. Our full-day PD is the first time it started, so October. So we, our first teachers, we'll have a few teachers credentialed in December, but most won't be credentialed till about May 1.
Number two, this microcredential, credentialing is all done after school, not during the school, regular school day, right?
Great question. So it can be a combination. So you can, if they're doing, some of the Way Forward cohorts are microcredentialed. So if they're meeting all four times and they're, they're in one of those that are microcredentialed, they would also be doing additional work outside of the school day. So it's, none of it's 100% during the school day because they're doing additional work outside of the school day for those who are, who are actually going for the microcredential.
Okay. Third question. How many of the microcredentials do you expect or can anticipate throughout this year?
Oh, that's a good question. Do you know the answer to that?
So are you talking about the?
The teachers or the courses?
Or the number of teachers?
Oh, year. How many?
Oh, right. Can one teacher get in a year?
For what?
How many can one teacher get in a year, or how many?
No, no. How many total microcredentials do you think will be issued this year?
Oh, for people, right now, they have an intent to microcredential form, and I would guess, I would say, if they all follow through, we're about at 75 or 80 at this time.
There are those. Okay. Can you give me some examples of these microcredentials, what area they're in?
Yeah, absolutely. They're all connected to the first three goals and then the leadership goal of the Way Forward. So, like, we have assessment for learning, for example. We the unique needs of gifted learners. We have meeting the needs of students with disabilities. So we've got, in character and well-being, we have schools working on that, schools of character process. So we've got somebody from Character Plus working with schools there. We have somebody working with schools on meeting the social-emotional needs of kids. So all of those strands, which actually we invited you guys to, so you probably, you would have a list of those. They're not part of the master plan, but in September, you would have gotten that list. And so that, those are the microcredential opportunities we have right now.
Last question. Is this sanctioned by DESI and encouraged?
DESI actually has microcredentials as well. So DESI is moving in a microcredential opportunity with, with their administrators, for example. So instead of having to get your specialist and then your doctor, you have a microcredential opportunity. So DESI is actually somebody who offers microcredentials.
Good. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Thank you. That passes.
Thank you.
We now have a motion to approve the bond issued purchases and related contracts for 7,500, 250,000. As submitted.
Good evening. This purchase is a cycle refresh of our existing voice routers. Those routers support our voice-over internet phones, and it will keep our, the new equipment will keep our phone system up and running.
I mean, how long is this life support? I mean, how is the normal lifespan?
They last anywhere from six to eight years.
How many of those do we have?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is, this is across the entire district, right?
Pardon?
These routers are across the district?
Yes. One's at Babler and one's at Crestview. They're separated by phone central offices.
Any other discussion? The motion to approve the bond issued purchases and related contracts, 7,500, 250,000, as submitted. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That passes. Okay. Moving along.
I have a motion to remove patron superintendent and board comments from the December 2, 2021 Board of Education meeting agenda to accommodate for the board award presentation.
Second.
Discussion.
The reason behind this is because that is an awards night?
It is an awards night.
And so we want to concentrate on the awards?
Correct.
But it's just a one-time, happening one time, right?
It is happening for the awards on December.
That's all I mean.
Yes.
We'll go back to the regular after that?
Yes.
This, the awards are on December?
Second.
December 2. So that's the next board meeting?
Yes, sir. And it's in-person, for the first time in two years.
Oh, the awards, first time in two years.
Yes. So exciting to be able to be back, doing it in the way we've done it in the past, and have the kids on stage and do it with us.
Is that here at Eureka? Is that here at Eureka?
Rockwood. Rockwood Summit.
Okay. So we do move them around.
Like we have done traditionally.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I'm gonna read that motion again. To, to remove patron superintendent and board comments from the December 2nd, 2021 Board of Education meeting agenda to accommodate for the board award, awards presentation. All, you approve?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Lynn, the awards will be first and then that shortened meeting will be afterward. Is that right?
Yes.
Other way around.
Sorry, what?
Other way around. Business.
Well, the meeting will be first and we go into the awards. And that's, good, okay. That's the reason we're cutting off the other two.
Only consent agenda items.
Yes.
We just want to focus on the kids' achievements.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. So let's talk about future agenda presentations and events to attend. Janet?
Lynn?
Yes?
I was apparently asleep at the wheel when we did the, did the consent items. There are two, there are two public gifts to the school.
Okay.
Early childhood PTO, Early Childhood Center monetary, $738.43 to supporting students and staff, purchase of STEM-related materials, playground, communication board, and let's get the conversation started, program this material. And the second one is from Hal Jaeger. Location Lafayette High School, equipment, $1,236, supporting the Lafayette High School Photography Program, donations of various equipment to the Lafayette High School Photography. And those of you who are new to the audience, we get these almost every board meeting, anywhere from two to three monetary value, all the way up to $20,000, all the way down to $100. And we do sincerely appreciate any organization, individual person that donates to the Rockwood School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. All right. So I believe it's a time in our meeting room for patron comments. And I appreciate your patience because I don't do this very often, so here we go. I'm going to read our statement. During patron comments, citizens may address the Board of Education concerning issues related to the school district. The Board of Education meeting is live streamed for the community's convenience. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. YouTube reserves the right to monitor and block inaccurate information. That process is beyond the control of the Rockwood School District. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Combining time or giving your time to someone else to speak is not allowed. Only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time when your, your time is up. Please note that at the board discretion, the board or superintendent may respond immediately to an issue raised during patron comments for clarification. However, our general practice is to respond to the comment at a later time via a phone call or written message if a response is needed. We have a stated, we have a stand with microphones ready so both the board and the audience may hear the patron comments clearly. And that's up there. As a reminder, masks are required in our buildings and should remain on even when you are speaking. The board appreciates that you have taken the time to come this evening and we value your input and your perspective. Once your remarks are over, please return to your seat. I would like to remind everyone that we expect that you will remain civil and respectful in your remarks. And if anyone becomes disruptive, we reserve the right to cut those three minutes short. Verbally aggressive language or vagality in any form is not accepted. Whether you are reading someone else's remarks or they are your own, it will not be tolerated. For your convenience, a three-minute time clock is ready.
Okay. Our first speaker this evening is Trish Gumbey with Chase Bryant after that.
Good evening. My name's Trish Gumbey. I'm the state representative in the 99th district, which encompasses Manchester, Twin Oaks Valley Park and unincorporated St. Louis County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I first want to offer my condolences to your community on the death of the students that attended Marquette. So please know that you're in my prayers and thoughts. The reason I'm here is to, I have a portion of Rockwood in my district. It's just south of Highway 44. And I just want people to be aware that the legislative session will be starting in, on January 5th. It extends until mid-May. And there are ways that you can follow legislation that affects public schools in, you know, during the session. One thing that happened that came out of COVID is in the past, you would have to go to Jeff City and do testimony in person. But now we allow for online testimony. And so you can go to the Missouri House of Representatives page. There are tabs that you can click on to see what hearings are taking place. In fact, there have been educational hearings this week, in fact. You can also look at archived hearings and so you can see what was said during those hearings. And you can also watch debate on the House floor. There's a link that you can watch that and that's archived as well. And there's an online testimony form and you can fill that out while we may not be able to, we don't read those during committee, but all of us on committees, we do read those, you know, in preparation. So I just want to encourage people, I don't think a lot of folks know that these are available and a lot of this in the last few years has just become available. So I just encourage you to follow along during session next year. Thank you.
Next is Chase Bryant and after that Sarah Bryant.
Hi, my name is Chase Bryant. I would like to tell you what I think about masks. I hate them. I get in trouble all the time for my mask being pulled down for a split second. I cannot hear the teachers talk with their masks on, so I just sit there and don't feel like paying attention. Even when I am taking a sip of water, I'm quickly yelled at for having it down. Some teachers are nice to the girls, but it comes to the boys, we get yelled at. Wearing a mask is hard for me to breathe. It makes my chest hurt sometimes and sometimes I feel like I'm isolating my breath and then it makes my stomach hurt during the day because I am breathing so hard. I'm afraid to get sent to the principal's office because of my mask wearing. So then I am nervous all the time when I just want to take a deep breath. My watch lets me know all the time that I need to slow down my breathing. I feel like it should be my choice if I want to have something covering my mouth when I am in school. I am so sick of some, sometimes I don't even want to get up in the morning anymore or even go to school. When I talk to my friends in the class, we're supposed to be working together. We sometimes get mad at each other because we think that we are being mean. Because they can't not see our faces. I get cold sores, breakouts of rashes of all over my face a lot. Then my face and stomach starts to hurt throughout the day. I've been given the option to have mask breaks, but when I have rashes, I get embarrassed and just stay in the class. I don't want to do this anymore. My hearts, my heart makes me feel like it's beating so fast throughout the day.
Next speaker is Sarah Bryant and after that Austin Connor.
Hard to go after my son. Hi, my name is Sarah and I'm here today because I feel you are neglecting your staff and students by putting our wonderful teachers in inappropriate positions. Our water fountains are covered. You're relying on six-year-olds to be responsible for filling up and consuming their water all day long. It's not the teacher's responsibility to oversee the refill of their water. Over 70% of our children today are dehydrated. That means statistically, many children are suffering in our schools. Headache, diarrhea, poor concentration, poor behavior, and lethargy are some of the effects of dehydration, which are also the effects of COVID. I'm still unclear with logic here, but arguably gyms and community centers have a wealth of bacterium, yet the water fountains are uncovered. I can't help but think our 100% dedicated custodial staff and the same users day in and day out put our, at our water fountains are nearly not as infectious, yet remain covered. It's hard to go after Chase. Sorry. Our children's faces are covered with bacteria-infested masks all day long. A recent study published from the Cleveland Clinic showed how bacterial meningitis and streptococcus were present on several children's masks. I'm not a scientist, but the information is out there for you. It's your job as a district to educate. Our children have a right to education as human in this country. Vaxxed or unvaxxed, conservative or liberal, you're to remain impartial. You're not allowed to tell my children who to vote for or about their personal medical choices or give them a reason why they should or should not get vaccinated or what God they're supposed to pray to, if any at all. It's your job to provide an enriching environment in which for them to learn and grow as individuals. You've taken a wrong turn and I believe in vaccines and I believe in germs and I believe in choice, logic, and the ability to make my own decisions for my children. But teaching them to be silent, to not touch, just stay six feet away is neglectful. You are putting our teachers in that position and it's not right. COVID isn't going away. The flu never went away. It still hasn't. You guys are in leadership and the purpose of leadership is to make decisions based on all, not on what's best just for you, what's best for all. You're choosing to listen to one side of science instead of both? That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Austin Connor and after that Xander Bryant.
Hello. I'm here to show support for the concerned parents here. Some of them, my friends from the St. Louis County Council meetings. I was appalled by the examples of images and texts found in books available in school libraries. Sometimes parents who rightfully complain about it get generalized as homophobic or transphobic or worse, domestic terrorists. You want so much to pander to a loud minority of activists that you harm and confuse the children you're supposed to educate and demonize the parents who love them. So the presence of some of these books in the libraries for inclusion, right? For LGBT education for transgender people? Have you even met a transgender person? If not, well, now you have. Because I'm biologically female, but I present as a man. I wasn't open about it, but I had to make a point. Maybe some of these fellows will disagree with my life choices, but that's fine. I'm still with them on what's important. The next generation is the future of America. And I'm tired of allies saying that they're trying to help people like me and then they go and make our reputation worse. Do you think I want little kids to look at queer erotica in their library? I don't. P to LGBT XYZ? Pedophiles do not belong in any community. They belong in therapy or prison or a third more effective option that I can't say as per decorum rules. I have no pride in a community that lets others willingly expose children to explicit content on our behalf and does nothing. It's not impossible to speak up. I have severe social anxiety and I'm still doing this. You don't need superpowers. You only need to be strong enough for just three minutes. And mines are about up, so.
Next speaker is Jason Moore and after that Jennifer Weston.
My turn.
So this is what I want to say. I do not care if you want to wear a mask or not. I do not want to anymore. It's really hard for me to learn and hear what people are saying. So I get bored and stop listening. When I was talking to my friend, he thought I was being mean because my mask makes it hard for him to hear me. I am always getting yelled at by so many teachers. I get sad because I really want to hug my friends and I'm, I am afraid to get in trouble. I want to go to school, but I get upset when I can't high-five my friends, wait, no, play tag with my friends. We can't even give someone a high-five. I have to go to the nurse to get a water bottle because if, because I forget mine ate a lot. And a lot of times there are, they are all gone. So then I do not have any water at all. I get headaches and stomach aches at, I mean, all the time. I see teachers in the hallway and classrooms without their masks on all the time. Well, all the time. I have COVID and so has my family. I don't think we need to do this stuff anymore.
Next speaker is Jennifer Weston and after that Katie Becker.
Oh, excuse me. Jason Moore, did I skip Jason?
No.
I didn't. There he is. I'm sorry, Jason. My deepest apologies. All right, Jason Moore. All I got to say is hearing what I've just heard. Austin, it was great seeing you here. Thank you for coming out. As a father, as a husband, that, that has angered me quite a bit, what I just heard. I had no idea that the water fountains were unavailable for the kids. How could that be? Kids are not at danger for, for COVID. First off, people should have the option to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. This has been, we've had this argument since day one of this entire thing a year and a half ago. Why I'm here has to do, I was not, I was going to talk about something else, but I, this angered me so much. But one thing that angered me quite a bit a few weeks ago was the threat, the FBI threat that's been called out by the US Attorney General's Office and the National School Board Association, and they actually walked away from it. Are you walking away from that original threat from parents for God, for God forbid, that they're speaking up on behalf of their children for what's being taught? I have been privy to a lot of the materials that have been exposed, not only in Rockwood, but across the state and across the US. I actually spoke about it at the county council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I gave all those materials to the council. That's why Austin's here. Thank you, sir. It, what I did not feel comfortable reading, what I saw, I felt just awful. I'm 40, I'm going to be 49 years old next year. When I was a kid, none of this was ever present anywhere, and now it's become normalized. Masks are becoming normalized. These little kids that just spoke up bravely tonight, do you hear what they just said? Do you have any idea? Put yourself in their shoes. Rethink how this, this district is being led. Are you really protecting them? I argue, no. You're just continuing a narrative. I don't know if it's extra money coming in from the feds, or where it's coming from, but this needs to stop. This is insanity. Now, I'm trying to monit, I'm trying to keep my tone, because kids are around. But please call me. If any of you want to talk to me, please call me. I'm always around, and I would love to talk to you. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I stand here tonight disappointed in you regarding your vote at the last meeting on the challenge for the book, "The Hate U Give." I read the book, and there are valid reasons why it has been one of the most challenged books for the past four years. It has many references to drugs, alcohol, sex, and profanity. Here are some excerpts from the book. "F the police, F the police. They don't give an F about us, so we don't give an F. Burn this B down." She looks the way Khalil's mama would look if Ms. Brenda wasn't on crack. I bet they'd be doing Molly. White kids love popping pills. Fooling around isn't new for us, and when Chris slipped his hand in my shorts, I didn't think anything of it. Then he got me going, and I really wasn't thinking at all. For real, my thought process went out the door. I left his house pissed and horny, the absolute worst way to leave. God, boys and their effing sex drive. I'm shocked that anyone would be okay with middle schoolers reading this book, and equally shocked with the challenge committee's solutions. Solution number one is for librarians to place young adult stickers on the book, and solution number two is to give parents the opportunity to place a notification in their child's Infinite Campus account. These are not solutions. There's a good chance that by putting young adult stickers on the book, but still accessible to all students, you are making it more enticing to read. And regarding the notification in Infinite Campus, I have not found a single parent who has heard of this process. Lastly, the challenge committee justified their decision to retain the book by saying that, while it does contain a lot of inappropriate language, it is a very well-written book. And, the goal is to give a variety of perspectives. It's now clear that books with sex, drugs, and violence are perfectly acceptable in Rockwood's libraries, as long as you deem the book to be well-written and with a diverse perspective. You realize how ludicrous this is, right? I find it hard to believe that you can't find well-written, diverse perspectives that do not contain questionable material. Striving for diverse perspectives should never come at the expense of exposing our kids to topics that are not age-appropriate. Perhaps you don't understand what this means. It means that they are not experienced enough to manage. Exposure to ideas which seem exciting are far more likely to lead to experimentation, and these have a high potential to be catastrophic. For instance, fentanyl is laced in many other drugs and is deadly at a very low dosage. And there are sexual predators everywhere on the internet. Do you have the means and resources to monitor these issues if you are wrong in your assessment? By retaining these books, you are complicit in desensitizing sex, drugs, and violence.
Elizabeth Scott's "Living Dead Girl" is a fictional novel available in both Marquette and Lafayette libraries. This book describes the daily rape, sodomy, and abuse of a 10-year-old girl over a period of five years, fantasies of holding down and raping a six-year-old, I'll repeat that, a six-year-old, okay? The description of the pedophile's mother raping him as he was a child, suicide ideation, suicide, and glorification of death, all with the constant theme, then when this happens, no one will help you, adults won't even notice, and victims need to stay quiet to survive. The book ends with the victim being killed, but not before she is stabbed and then sodomized and raped in graphic detail by the adult captor at age 15. Child rape is the entirety of the book, not a small section. It is absurd that this filth is being peddled to children in Rockwood schools. According to librarians at Marquette and Lafayette, the process of vetting incoming books involving having at least two positive professional reviews for a book to be accepted. So they're looking at reviews of how well-written a book is deemed to be, and not the actual content. Illicit content trumps how well something is written every time. There are many other literary works that can evoke emotion and teach skill without resorting to filth, and in this book's case, possible emotional trauma. Our community grants the school's implicit authority, so when our children view and/or read glorified pedophilia and pornography provided by the school, it sanctions this material as acceptable. By you keeping this book in our school libraries, Rockwood is saying that all of this is okay to our students and our children. Dehumanizing people, normalizing violent perverse behavior, normalizing child rape and molestation is called grooming. It has no place in our schools. And instead of standing with us and removing this book entirely dedicated to child rape and others filled with pornographic images and descriptions, you seem to be fighting us, and this community at large, by making the book-challenge process more complex and difficult. And this is all after we brought this to your attention. While these books are being challenged, they're still made available to our kids. Furthermore, the intensely complex bureaucratic process to remove these books obfuscates both personal and professional responsibility from the board and administration. By overhauling the book-vetting process, as well as removing this filth from our school libraries, you give a clear message that the Board of Ed and the administration does not condone giving our child pornography. I'll leave you with this excerpt, and I won't read much, because it's trash, was so deeply disturbing, so bear with me. "Get up. Those were the first words I ever heard. Open my eyes. See a girl black and blue all over, dried blood along her thighs, red-brown stains smeared across the hairless juncture between." This was describing post-rape of the 10-year-old girl by an adult male. The onus is on you guys at this point to remove these books. It should not be on the shoulders of the few parents up here that are trying to protect our kids from filth like this.
Next speaker is Sarah Barnard, and after that, Kristen Eldridge.
Good evening. I want to talk to you tonight about two books. The first one is called "All Boys Aren't Blue." It's in all four of our high schools. School libraries in eight states so far have taken it off their shelves after parents told their school boards about the content of the book. The content, not the author, or the fact that it's a memoir, or the perspective from which it's told. The content is what parents around the country, and here in Rockwood, are concerned about. It includes explicit, detailed descriptions of sex acts. At times, it is like pornography. There are multiple excerpts that I find too explicit to be for a school library. I will only read a couple of tonight, and I will be careful in the way that I'm reading them. From page 266. "He reached his hand down and pulled out my D-I-C-K. He quickly went to giving me head. Watch your teeth. I slowed down and got into a good rhythm. I did my best to act like my favorite porn star. His body felt great in my mouth." Page 271. "Nervous and drunk, I listened and got on my stomach. He got on top and slowly inserted himself into me. It was the worst pain I think I've ever had in my life. He then added more lube and tried again." The second book I want to read, want to tell you about, is called "The Haters." It is in three of the high schools. It has explicit descriptions of sex acts, minimizes date rape, and has 500 instances of gratuitous profanity and smut. "She reached beside, behind herself and kindly, and kind of carefully took my not-hard D-I-C-K into one hand, and she rose up a little, adjusted her panties, and breathed harder and opened her mouth. The moment she put me inside her, I came. F-word. I said I curled, I curled up around her like a snail and kept coming about 100 times." We've been told that we can keep our kids from reading these books, but I want to let you know that the procedures for doing that are not effective. In order to restrict a title, parents would have to know about the title. Aside from listening to this patron comment right now, parents have no way of knowing that these books are in our libraries right now. They are not on the approved list that Rockwood posts online with its 6th through 12th grade language, arts curriculum. So this district isn't telling parents that these books are available. In a typical real-world situation, a parent would only know about these books after the child has checked them out. Parents might never see or hear about them. Another way is to put a note in the system that says our kids can't check out young adult books, which is how they are classified, but then that will restrict other books, such as, like "Lord of the Flies," "To Kill a Mockingbird," which are also young adult books. Many parents are totally fine with those. They are not explicit. But our kids won't be able to read them if we say we don't want them to read books that are essentially pornographic. It doesn't make sense. It's like grouping PG-13 content with rated-R content and saying to avoid rated-R, we also have to avoid PG-13. Parents here in Rockwood have submitted a formal challenge to both of these books, so they can be reviewed. Thank you.
Next speaker, Kristen Eldridge, and after that, Janet Edrick.
The books in our library, I am concerned about tonight contain inappropriate sexual descriptions of sex between children, teens, and even adults and minors. It represents an alarming agenda that targets youth hiding behind virtuous words such as diversity and inclusion. Of course, we must welcome children of all identities into our libraries, and there are plenty of books that do that. Again, what I am deeply concerned about is the large number of books sitting on our library shelves with the agenda of sexually grooming our children. A visually appealing graphic novel with really no storyline or character development, "The Breakaways," is currently at Chesterfield-Gurica Pond Elementary and Crestview Middle School. Two elementary-age characters are illustrated kissing in bed, and one of them questions their gender. Mind you, the complicated topic of gender identity is not mentioned in the summary of the book, which really makes me wonder if they are trying to hide the topic from adults and parents. Long Boy tells the story of Mike, a kid in his early twenties, growing up on the poor side of the tracks, across the water from Seattle. Mike is not only trying to find himself, but he's also trying to survive, struggling to make ends meet when the world seems stacked up against him. Sounds like a really great story, right? Except threaded throughout the story are numerous sexual scenes and extremely vulgar language. Page 91. "What if I told you I touched another guy's D-word? What if I told you I sucked it? I was 10 years old, but it's true. I suck Doug's D-word. The real estate guy, and he sucked mine, too." In addition to that, I'll share with you the exceptional vocabulary. After 44 F-words and 41 S-words, I stopped counting after page 66. Well, each of you, the leadership in Rockwood be strategizing how we can audit and clean up our library shelves as soon as possible. The process of writing challenges for every book is not efficient enough. Parents shouldn't have to stand up here pleading with you to protect our children from the evil agenda of sexual grooming.
Last month, I stood before you and introduced the concept of child erotica. It is not my term. It is a term among booksellers used to get around pornography laws. Child erotica is used by pedophiles to desensitize kids to the idea of having sex. Hey, everyone's doing it, it's fine. That is called grooming. I expected that we would receive notes back thanking us for alerting the district that these books are on Rockwood shelves. I really thought that. Nope. What we got were notes saying that if we don't like a book, we can challenge it. So that means... Our time to jump through your hoops to clean up your mess. That's a big mistake, Rockwood. We don't even know how many of these books are out there. We're told there is no inventory list to give us, but we know that can't be true. Big mistake. We just learned that if we challenge a high school book, the review panel will bring in students, the very people we are trying to protect. Big mistake. Parents are receiving responses from admin folks who say the library seeks to serve diverse perspectives. What, the pedophile perspective? And, if the librarians don't know what they're buying, it's time they wake up and figure it out. And if they do know, and they're good with it, they should not be around children. Sadly, it's time for me to present another obscene book, "Dead End" by Jason Myers. This is in my son's library. This is the most soul-crushing thing I have ever read. While reading it, I felt like I was sinking into darkness, and I am not a depressed teen. "Dead End" is so sick that there's no way that I can read any of it here, but you can download it at libraryexposed.blogspot.com. Now, I didn't think "Dead End" had any redeeming value until I realized that it's really a helpful how-to guide. First, we have Drew and Gina, a teen couple in love. We learn graphic details about their sex life, who does what in whose mouth. Then we learn all about how to gang rape a girl. Poor Gina. We learn about getting a buddy to hold her down, how to moisten what's dry, how to avoid DNA evidence, and remember to snap some pics of your buddies raping her, so you have some insurance in case they blab. Now, if you're Drew, the boyfriend, you'll go kill the guys who raped Gina, then you'll go on the run. In the woods, you're going to run into a gang of kids who get you drunk and gang-rap your girlfriend again. While you're sleeping it off, she commits suicide. You wake up and find her, and you cut your own throat. But no worries, the two kids will meet again in the afterlife and walk off through a beautiful meadow together, and we ask why our teens are traumatized.
Next speaker, Amy Krebs, and after that, Haley Rogers.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight to review a book titled "Fun Home: A Family Tragicomic" by Alison Bechdel. This book is graphic cartoon style that appeals to young non-readers. The story entails a father that rapes underage boys, as well as having an emotionally abusive relationship with his wife. His three children are traumatized growing up by their father's mental instability, whom eventually commit suicide. In this book, the father was an undertaker that exposed his young children to naked corpses lying on prep tables, dissected and genitalia exposed. This is all graphically drawn out for the young readers to see in this book here, green shiny book. There is another graphic cartoon of oral sex being performed with a protest sign against Christians in the background. Seems to be a lot of common themes in all these books. They're all embedded in these books, such as an obsession with death, suicide, sexuality, rape, anti-family, anti-God, activism. This book was available to the Rockwood High School students that attended the Individualized Learning Center, or ILC. Learning Center, or ILC, until it closed last year to be reinvented. ILC was open to students that have significant fears, anxiety, learning disabilities, and other struggles that make it hard for them to focus and thrive in the school environment. Why was this book available to the most vulnerable children? This book normalizes rape by an adult. What kind of message does this send to these children? Shouldn't they be learning to trust and respect authority figures, not fear them? When the ILC is reinvented, how will we make sure that rape books and pornography books aren't being read to these children that need extra support and love? All children, but... One can only assume that the existence of these pornography and rape culture books in our schools will only enhance trauma and suicide. Aren't we trying to prevent trauma for our children due to the increase in suicides over the past couple of years? Many local education agencies are receiving billions of dollars across the nation from the federal government's ESER III funds, which are to gather information on your child in the areas of social and emotional learning, equity, and trauma, and implement governmental services where required. School districts are hiring local education agencies to intervene with families and children coping with trauma and suicide with the ESER III funds. One way to reduce trauma and suicide would be to eliminate pornography, rape culture, trauma-induced books from our school libraries. Might I add, teachers are overwhelmed and stressed out dealing with the extra burden of social and emotional learning, and the surveys, and the pornography books. Teachers are not psychologists, psychiatrists, or medical doctors. They are not trained to handle the reactions that children may have to this type of content. I'm an educator and a parent that has a love and a passion to protect and advocate for all children. Five out of seven of you on the board are educators, so you understand how damaging it is to expose our children to traumatic topics and pornography. Oh, darn it. I just have a little paragraph, can I finish? Okay. The board superintendent administration has the power to do something about it, and our children are under attack. Please remove the pornography and preserve and protect our wonderful district and keep the federal government out. We do love Rockwood. Thank you. Protect our district!
Next speaker, Haley Rogers. After that, Elizabeth Cohen.
Well, I told you we'd be back in spades. Like many, I was shocked at the last meeting with all the books exposed and this meeting. What happens in darkness will always come to light. In the aftermath, myself and many others had these questions. How are these books in our school libraries? Who is approving and purchasing or supplying these? What can parents and citizens do about this? Here are some of the unsatisfactory answers we have found. How are they in our libraries? Well, many are added without proper vetting because they meet diversity and inclusion criteria, others because they've won an award. But is pedophilia, rape, and drugs what you want your child identifying with? Who's providing these? It's up to the discretion of individual librarians using Rockwood's loosely-defined handbook. Books are either donated by various organizations or purchased by the schools. Very few are researched or read in thorough before adding them to the shelves, clearly. What can parents do about this? Unfortunately, not much. First, reach out to the librarian, who will suggest adding a note to your child's destiny account to restrict checking out specific titles or genres. But it's impossible to know all the books, as a thorough list has not been provided to parents. And restricting checkout access does not prevent a child from reading the book while in the library. Why do we have to opt out of this stuff? Should this not be an opt-in situation? Next, contact the principal, who will have the same response. Yes, principals will further this and direct you to policy 6241 with the formal challenge form. As with many things uncovered lately, this has been a pass-the-buck game. Administrators themselves are unclear of the ins and outs of their own protocols and keep changing the goalposts to make things more difficult. After a challenge is submitted, Dr. Willett has free rein to accept or deny using undefined and inconsistent criteria. We also do not know how long it takes to schedule, review, or resolve a challenge. With as many books that are in question, it could take a while, and the books remain on the shelves for the duration, and there's no guarantee of change. Yes, our kids will be exposed to lots of unsavory things in their young lives. Books are such a small part. But if there's a way to preserve innocence in just one area for a little while longer, shouldn't we? These books have mature topics that are best left to the discretion of parents. So if you'd like your child to have access to these, try the public library or on your own dime, but they have no place in an academic setting. Kids are being exposed to adult issues much too early, and they aren't coping well. We have strayed, have we strayed so far from a moral society that adults are fighting to keep this content freely available in schools? Stop sexualizing our children. One final question, as my time is running up. If the process to remove or restrict a book is so arduous, shouldn't it be an equally thorough process with accountability to add books into the libraries to begin with?
Next speaker, Elizabeth Cohen. After that Jessica Zermulyn.
Hello. That's hard to follow all that. I'm, I'm, honestly, my stomach hurts right now from listening to all that. Last year, our kids were told they needed to wear masks to protect the teachers. All teachers have now had the opportunity to protect themselves with a vaccine. Students no longer need to wear masks to protect the teachers. This year, our kids were told they needed to wear masks to protect students who couldn't be vaccinated due to their age. Every person aged five and up can now be vaccinated if their legal guardian decides it's what's best for them. Students no longer need to wear masks to protect other students. High risks have always been in our schools and are fully capable of making decisions for their own health. My oldest son was born 11 weeks premature with underdeveloped lungs and is severely asthmatic. So flu is a big risk for him due to his compromised lungs. We made the decision to accept the risks of in-person school during flu season for him. If a family with someone at high risk doesn't trust their own mask or vaccination to give them the protection they need, they can choose virtual option for school. It is time to make masks optional. It is time for kids to be allowed to put their own health and wellness first. It is time to put the focus on kids who have been suffering under these mandates for the last year and a half and stop focusing only on COVID. It is time to get back to caring about our kids' academics. It is difficult to focus when breathing is hindered. It is hard for students to hear and understand their teachers during class. Just asked Randy Weingarten, the president of the American Federation of Teachers, who removed her mask at a conference earlier this month because people were, quote, "having a hard time hearing what she had to say." Our kids don't have the option of simply removing their masks when they are struggling at school, or they risk being shamed and punished by teachers and staff, or even kicked out. The masks are impeding their learning. The recent standardized test results clearly show the damage that has been done since March of 2020 to the students in the Rockwood School District, and our Rockwood ratings are dropping along with their scores. To use the word of the board's president, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in this board for allowing a temporary student superintendent to damage and divide this district, as he has to other districts in the past, without accountability. He has no skin in this game, no concern about losing his job, and quite frankly, a clear disdain for the parents he represents. Yet you are ignoring your key responsibilities as school board members to adopt and evaluate policies and to assure district performance. I am disappointed as I watch you allow those who blindly support you skirt around the rules in this public forum. They talk about other parents and disparage them each and every meeting, yet no one stops them. At the last meeting, you allowed one patron to speak for two minutes about an incident she had no direct knowledge of that involved other parents before stopping her. B-I-T-C-H was spelled by your supporters multiple times during the meeting at Lafayette without anyone stopping them. Yet someone who is concerned about the pornography of our students are being exposed to cannot even read a Rockwood-approved library book without being reprimanded for spelling one of the words. What does that say about the job you are doing? What does that say about Rockwood?
Next speaker, Jessica Zermulyn, and after that Renee Smola.
Good evening. Like many others in the audience, I've battled multiple housing market hardships and have fought really, really hard to get my kids here. We came here in 2019 with the expectation that Rockwood would provide a high-quality education and care about our children. While we have had many wonderful experiences at Gaggy and LaSalle, I'm very concerned with the availability of pornography and embedded political agenda in your curriculum. Last month, parents reading examples of this aloud to you were silenced, as if what you allow children to check out in the library could not be shared with your adult ears. If children can read it, then you need to listen to it. If it's bad enough to warrant silencing and removal from YouTube and Facebook, then it's not appropriate for our children. It seems like a no-brainer that every parent can get behind. Some things, like pornographic material, warrant immediate removal, not a process. If you found alcohol being served in a school cafeteria, would you remove it immediately or have parents fill out a bunch of paperwork and then change the rules? In the middle of the game, in order to make the process difficult, in order to determine what to do about it? Take action now. Show us that our children matter. Doesn't it seem interesting that God can be removed, but pornography can be included? While my children would never check out books like this, they could find them on a shelf, flip through them, and be disturbed by them, and for that reason, putting restrictions on my children's account will not be sufficient. My concerns lie with the system and the coordinators that approve such material in curriculum. School districts need to realize that their place is in academics. It is simply not your place to expose our children to pornography or teach them values in politics in a slanted way. If you want to know if politics are hidden in your curriculum, all you have to do is involve parents as they should be. You may simply not be noticing what's upsetting to a large part of your population because you can't see outside of your own lens. And this, of course, works under the assumption that you care and you want to try to be unbiased. No child should ever know what their teacher's political opinions are if you're doing education correctly. Furthermore, the responses of the school board have concerned me. I watch your meetings every month. Last meeting, I heard you express disappointment with the parents who expressed concern for their children and had differing opinions other than your own. These are very eloquent, educated parents who are simply looking out for their children's futures and morals. We come to you with the expectation that you care about our children. Parents are routinely met with apathy and disdain. We cannot help but make the conclusion that this is just another way to silence our voices and to take away our moral influence as their parents. I'm insisting that you remove the pornography and messages with a political agenda from your curriculum. You can change your challenge process. You can put our comments off till the end of your board meetings, but we will not go away. These are our kids, and we will stand up for them.
Next speaker is Renee Smola, and after that Crystal Dmogalski.
Hi, I'm here to speak on the materials in our library. I just became aware of them and I got to hear more stuff tonight. I have served as a Rockwood trainer and an expert in my field, providing trainings to counselors and parent aides in this district on understanding child abuse, signs and symptoms of what to do with it, and I was also invited to be on a panel to design a suicide assessment for elementary-level students. Now, here's where it comes in. To diminish the possibility of future ramifications against this district regarding inappropriate material, it is my professional opinion and obligation to provide you with instruction on the legalities of sexual abuse. First, let's start with the laws. Federal law, Section 21115, and Missouri state law, 105.200. All mandated reporters shall report immediately any suspected child abuse. So what if you don't make the call? Law, quote, "If a mandatory reporter does not report an instance of child abuse and neglect, that person will be charged by the district attorney with a misdemeanor offense, punishable by imprisonment of up to six months and a fine of $1,000." And, listen, school districts will not back the educators or the staff who failed to hotline this abuse. Yesterday, I interviewed Dr. Parr, a retired school counselor and past president of the American Counselor Association, as well as Alice Carpenter, a retired chief investigator of chief abuse of the Division of Social Services. Both interpreted some of these books to be pornographic in nature, not appropriate for children outside of a therapeutic setting, and only with parental permission. Now, let's define sex abuse. The Division of Social Services can include rape, sodomy, touching, taking pictures, videos, but listen to this, exposure. Exposure to pornographic videos, pictures, or narrations. And according to the above definition, the books in our libraries are considered pornographic in nature, and if it involves a child under age 18, it is child pornography. Hold on, I'm limited. Hold up, I'm limited. Because we know this material is available to students and school staff are mandated reporters, this puts them in a little bit of a difficult situation. Are they supposed to hotline librarians? What about the teachers who take their class to the library? Or maybe the person who ordered the pornographic materials? This falls under the administrators. I'm a mandated reporter. Who do I? Who do I hotline? And what are my consequences for not hotlining? According to the American Psychological Association and the American School Counsel Association, I could be put on probation, lose my license, perhaps my business. Educators also face consequences, including, according to the Association of American Educators, losing their job for multiple offenses. But let me remind everybody, it's not just up to mandated reporters to hotline, because parents can hotline suspected child abuse also.
Okay, so I have just a quick article, real fast. So one of the articles I just got last Friday, and it is from an epidemiologist from St. Johns, from Johns Hopkins University, asking her, "When does the pandemic end?" She replied... "Or we care a lot less," she added. "I think for most people, it just fades into the background of their lives. I realize that answer may sound jarring, but the alternative, a society permanently dominated by COVID, is jarring, too. Eventually, the cost of organizing our lives around the virus will exceed the benefits. In some cases, we may have already reached that point." So my point with that article is, when will it end here? Every day, my child comes home from school asking when she doesn't have to wear her mask at school, telling me that kids are constantly being yelled at and getting in trouble because they have to pull their mask up. Well, the poor things can't breathe. They can't talk to their friends, they can't see each other smile. They want to take their masks off. They, if they have to, um, they're allowed to keep their water bottle, at least at our school, on their desk, but if they pull their mask down and take a drink of water, they're told to do it real quick. Because if it's not fast enough, I guess they're going to spread COVID. So my daughter pretty much comes home every day with a full water bottle. Outside of that, we have not had a normal school year since 2019. 2019. These kids have been missing school or wearing a mask for almost two years. It's absolutely ridiculous, and we've all been sitting in here wearing masks as have you guys. I mean, I'm getting a headache. I mean, maybe some people are fine, maybe you guys are fine with it, I don't know. But I have a nine-year-old and a 14-year-old, and they want their lives back. Because guess what? Outside of school, they don't wear their masks. They hang out with their friends, they go to football games, we go to Target, we go to the mall. We don't wear our masks. And guess what? My kids aren't getting the vaccine either. I know Dr. Ricker is waiting for the vaccinations because he thinks maybe, maybe we don't have to wear a mask, but my kids aren't getting vaccinated. And we want the mask to stop. Thank you.
Next speaker, Lisa Guard. After that Brenda Wintz.
I worked at Bowles Elementary as a classroom assistant from January through May of 2021. I worked with every grade level each and every day. While there, I witnessed firsthand how pointless and even harmful mandatory masking of children can be. Children of all ages did not wear their masks properly. I cannot count the times the adults would say, "Put your masks back up." Every day, I saw children laying their masks on the floors, on the tables, everywhere. Their masks would be wet from chewing or spitting in them. Many appeared as if they had never been washed, covered with dirt and grime. Several were even green from the mucus of their runny noses. On spring picture day, each class... On spring picture day, each class was brought into the gym. There were two photographers, each with a visibly used step stool next to them, that each student placed their mask on, then had their picture taken. And the stool was not wiped off in between. When I went to the teacher and said, how is this happening? She just shrugged and she said, I don't know. So I guess that was the end of it. Kind of defeats the purpose. I don't tell the story to get anyone into trouble, but just to point out, it is impossible to wear these masks in any way that's actually helpful. I know it was difficult for me to even look at some kids in the face because of how gross their mask was. What effect does that have on them when people won't give them eye contact? Also, what are we doing to our kids psychologically by making them afraid of a virus that, thank God, has only taken approximately 20 children out of 75 million, according to Johns Hopkins in the United States, who did not have an underlying health issue? And another, and let me stop, of course that's tragic, of course it is. But also the approximately 400 or more who have died with COVID that had an issue, a medical issue, but twice that number have died of regular pneumonia, and we've never masked for pneumonia. What other psychological and developmental damage is done? Because when they can't see each other's faces, normal human development depends on matching language, tone of voice and facial and body expressions in order for people to receive the full communication. You take this away from the children who are developing, it's like teaching a child to write but with their fingers tied together. I worked with kindergarteners every day on phonics who couldn't hear me because I had a mask over my face. And then they couldn't see my mouth shape, my tongue shape, anything that would help them figure out how to make those sounds. This prevented their learning. My husband and I have a child at EHS and LaSalle, one of them has an IEP. We are listed as the educational decision makers. If we are the educational decision makers, then we are saying, get the masks off my children. Let me be the educational decision maker. Thank you.
Next speaker, Brenda Wince. After that, Dennis Gard.
I would like to thank the Rockwood Board in advance. On October 28th, a student-athlete practice ended a little early because of the weather. And with doing so, it was raining. The child was waiting for its parents to pick him up, so the student waited inside of the school. The student had his book bag, sports equipment, and decided wisely, I'm here, so let me take advantage and go outside and do some schoolwork for a project that I've been working on for school. At that time, the student decided, I will go out, and then the student re-entered the building. The person, the student passed two individuals, two individuals who work with students. The student continued to walk down the hallway with his book bag and also sports equipment. One of the individuals re-entered the building after exiting and approached the student and asked him, are you a student here? The other individual stood outside the school building and called 911. As the student was waiting for a pickup by the parent, which was me and my husband, the officers arrived a few minutes later. They asked the student, can I see your ID? That day, the student IDs was given out and the student was able to show the ID that he was truly a student of that, of that school. The officer and the other officer decided to search the remaining part of the building. The student just looked, what did I do? What just happened? I've been through these doors hundreds of times because my older brother was a student here. I played on the theater team. I also come through JRTC. I work with special needs students and I'm an athlete, a student athlete with decent grades, good grades. On the grounds, about 7:30 the day before, the student was on the grounds also picking up leaves. Didn't have any problems, felt safe, but on that day, on the 28th, the individual showed no concern for the safety and well-being of my child. They passed the student, then asked him if he was okay. Are you, are you okay? Do you have any concerns? Why are you here? Where's your parents? No, they decided to call 911 and had no concern of my child's safety. In my opinion, they don't belong in education. He did nothing wrong. He said nothing wrong. He was waiting for a ride. My question to the school board and to the president, Jamie Bays, what did he do? After a full review of the investigation, we're expecting a mutual decision will be made on the outcome of the unfortunate call for this situation. Let me make this really quickly. If your child came home and said, my day went well, that's one thing, but how was your school day and what happened at the school day? Think about how you would feel if your child replied and said, the police was called on me today.
Next speaker, Dennis Gard. After that, Chelsea Price.
Hello, my name is Dennis Gard and I am the pastor at Central Baptist Church here in Eureka. I have two children that attend Rockwood. One of the books in question is Gender Queer, that is going to be coming up under review on December 6th. I was at the last board meeting and heard about this book, was highly offended at its content, and to be honest with you, have not taken the courage to truly look at all the pictures. My wife has emailed you all excerpts from that, so you can review it yourselves, because it is a book that violates many state regulations. Having the book Gender Queer and other ones like it violates Missouri state law 573.020 because the high school is promoting and not, and/or allowing access to sexually explicit materials to minors. Since the library allows access to Gender Queer and other books like it, the school is committing an offense of promoting obscenity in the first degree. Likewise, according to Supreme Court, books like Gender, excuse me, Gender Queer and other books like it do not meet the standardized qualifications to pass the Miller test. You may ask what the Miller test is. It was an establishment to help overcome free speech issues by defining what society says is or is not pornographic. Gender Queer and other books like it fail this test on, of the three guidelines, due to its lewd and sexually explicit content and that it is openly offensive and provides no literary value. As a spiritual leader in our community, pornographic materials like these can lead to violence against others, distort children's self-image, cause long-term mental stress and stimulate the brain in adverse ways. For the health and well-being of our community, pornographic materials should not be allowed on school property. Gender Queer does not meet the community standards of decency, it depicts obscene acts, and it adds no value to the reader. Gender Queer and others like it demoralize our community and devalue our schools. It is not a free speech issue since these materials violate state law 573.020 and fail the Miller test. Concerned parents should not have to wait for a review board to investigate this book, nor any other books like it, nor should warning labels or simply using checkout restrictions to help protect children because they don't. These books should be immediately removed by the Rockwood schools. Likewise, any other sexually explicit materials found should be removed immediately, and I call for the board to form a committee to research them.
Next speaker, Chelsea Price. And after that, Teresa Thompson.
Good evening. I definitely can't top a lot of what books have already been shared, but there is another book, while it is not as R-rated as what some of these other wonderful parents have shared, which I guess I will now be looking into as well. There is another book available called It Feels Good to Be Yourself, a book about gender identity, among others, available at Gaggy Elementary on display for our children to read. This agenda and these books are not transparent to our community. I was told I could browse on an antiquated server 14,000 books to find what my son could or could not look at. As a Christian, my family teaches kindness, we teach love and acceptance of others, we teach our children that there may be people around them that may not look like them, that may not act like them, but they should respect them and teach them kindness. That is the role of our teachers and educators at this district, not to be teaching ideology or other things of this nature. So with that, we can only teach love and kindness. If you have a daughter who is strong-willed and athletic and logical and maybe a bit scant on the sensitive caretaker role, my mother would be raising her hand, go ahead and raise your hand. What about if you have a son who's a little bit sensitive? My son loves to draw. What this ideology is teaching our children is that if they feel worthless, then they are worthless. If they feel ugly, then guess what they are? That's not truth. And that is what I'm teaching my children. We have, we should not, as a society, regress to such one-dimensional views of a man and a woman. We should look at people for their heart and who they are and love them for that. If you have a child who conforms to gender norms, praise them for their qualities. If you have a child who does not conform to gender norms, praise them for their qualities. We can be logical, empathetic, we can be athletic and artistic regardless of how we were born. Our children are at school to be loved, poured into for who they are, what they love and what makes them happy. I have had personal conversations with my child's teacher. I know she loves him as if she was her, as if he was her own, but it is still the prime, not the primary responsibility of anyone other than the parent to educate children on things of this nature. Thank you.
Next speaker, Collette Nicholson. After that, Camille Subramanian.
So I wanted to address mental health tonight, but first I want to go back to the two young boys who spoke at the beginning about the water fountains not being opened. I have also noticed this at the high school, and it is a big problem. So you've also closed the bathrooms. So I'm guessing it's COVID-related, but nobody cared when kids were smoking in the bathroom, vaping, having sex, smoking weed, piercing their ears. So I'm not really getting connection of why the bathrooms are closed because of COVID. Everything else occurred in there, and my daughter now has to go to the nurse to use the, actually use the restroom because nothing's open. So now I want to move on to mental health. So there was a presentation this week with the Alive and Well communities about suicide and mental health of our students. So it sounded good first, right? Mental health of our students. But then you look at their website, and what is it about? Diversity, Equity, Inclusion. So under the guise of mental health, we're really going to teach about hate and division. So I know last time I spoke about my child, my black child, who was oppressed, taking care of, you know, cleaning up the mental health issues you created with her Every Mind Matters program. Does this fall under the Alive and Well contract we signed? Because if so, I need to pull her out because it's not appropriate. We are a mixed-race household. You've taught my white child, he's terrible. You've taught my black child, she's oppressed. How do you think my kids are going to interact now? No, we don't judge people on the color of their skin. We judge them on their character, who they are. Skin color doesn't determine who you are. You need to stop with this. So I also want to know, one of the qualities we were really looking for in a new superintendent was taking ownership of decisions. So it's your masking decision, if you listen to these children, that is harmful. Did you listen to the woman who is mental health, in her mental health field, how harmful this is? The person who worked at Bowles Elementary? What you're doing to these children with your decision, yours? Own it. You're offering our children pornography? How in the world does that help their mental health in any way, shape or form, or their academic education? I would, I'd love an answer to that one. And, I mean, you're covering their faces every day with a bacterial-filled piece of paper or cloth mask? You're impeding their academics. This is what you're here for. Academics. Nothing else.
Next speaker, Collette Nicholson. After that, Camille Subramanian.
Good evening. I'm here tonight seeking to understand the disconnect between parents and the board, which we have seen a lot of this evening. I personally know three people on the board, and they're known to be great parents. Kids read and watch. Randy Miller and I served on the Stanton PTO for several years together, and Laura Lee and Jamie are friends and neighbors of my brothers and have been for many, many years. Jamie is actually the one that I'm referring to when I said she's known for being aware of what her kids read and watch, which is very respectful, as we have heard tonight from many, many parents. During the last meeting, some things were brought to my attention, as has been the case over the last two years. There seems to be a disconnect between your reputation in the community and your actions on the board. Parents bring books to your, to your attention with vulgar language and are not even allowed to spell the words, yet kids can go to our school libraries and check them out to read. Obviously, it tells us you're not okay with the language either, as any good parents wouldn't be. The patron comments ended at the last meeting with Jamie saying, I'm saddened tonight by a lot of the tone and conversation that's taken place from people who have stepped to the podium to use their time in this way. I'm just disappointed, that's all I can say. I wish she was here tonight so she could explain what she's disappointed in. Because when I listened to the comments, I heard parents expressing their concerns and wanting changes. A mom who's very worried about her daughter shared that she is, her daughter's now on medicine because she has panic attacks due to wearing masks. Parents discuss pornographic books that were then brought to my attention, and I have since read several of them, and they are right. They are filth, as we have heard tonight, and need to be removed immediately. One parent provided proof that there were no threats to the board or the administration, none, which should be a great thing to hear because I don't know anyone who's okay with people being threatened. Maybe I misunderstood what Jamie was disappointed in, but again, I'm seeking to understand because parents are coming to you, expressing their concerns, but their perception is all of these concerns are being ignored. We all know about the infamous email from last year telling teachers to hide information from parents, which caused a lot of distrust. That situation was rectified by removing that person from their position. However, some of the board members voted for her to keep her position, which further fractured the trust. All of these things have been brought, have brought negativity and distrust to our community. Good, concerned parents stand here, meeting after meeting, voicing their concerns, but nothing changes. Instead of saying you're disappointed in what parents are saying, you should be saying, we hear you and will work with you to help make Rockwood better for all. I, I know it's, I just want to say, I genuinely would love to hear, how do we work together to make Rockwood better? How do we work together to build the trust back? Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Camille Subramanian, and then Laura Burkhart.
Okay, I brought a prop to liven things up a little bit.
Some props. Okay, does everyone know what this is? It's the type of mask that doctors wore a few hundred years ago to ward off the bubonic plague. The thinking was that the plague was caused by miasma or bad air. And so the doctors would fill the beak with sweet smelling things like flowers or spices. Back then, people didn't understand what a virus was. They were trying to make sense of a scary world through the science of their day. Flash forward a few hundred years and we're wearing these. We are now aware that viruses are microscopic, but despite this fact, these masks with spaces between the fibers that are much, much larger than the size of the COVID-19 particles are worn with the fervor of a toddler with a security blanket. If it makes you feel safe, I fully support your freedom to choose that. I would like to advocate for my freedom as a parent to choose medical interventions like masks and experimental vaccines for my own children. The masks give my daughter headaches and my son a face rash. Here's his mask with blood on it because he had chapped lips and he still had to keep wearing it as it was bleeding and irritating his face. If we, sorry, I get upset. If we, as a culture, were really concerned with the science of masks, we would focus on randomized controlled trials, which are the gold standard for research, from an NIH article. Randomization reduces bias and provides a rigorous tool to examine cause-effect relationships between an intervention, like a mask, and an outcome. This is not possible with any other type of study design. I sent the board several randomized controlled trials and I'm guessing you didn't read them. But guess how many RCTs the CDC and other health authorities have provided as proof that masks work to protect against viruses? Zero. I reviewed the data of several RCT studies and did my own risk-benefit analysis in light of how Rockwood's mask mandate was hurting my kids' health. Yet I had no parental rights to send either of my kids to school without a mask. Based on the science, I want you to stop forcing experimental medical interventions on our kids without parental consent. I don't think we have to wait 300 years to see what people think about these masks. We already have the science to prove that these are as ridiculous as these at stopping viruses.
Next speaker, Laura Burkhart, and after that, Erica Hagley.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I have three children in the district, one being a sophomore at Marquette. I apologize in advance if I get emotional. It's been a very rough week. I'm here tonight to extend my deepest gratitude to Rockwood. I want to thank the board, administrators, educators, counselors, and social workers, primarily at Marquette. As you know, this week has been impossible. We lost three teens from our community in a fatal car crash. The kids are in so much pain. My sophomore of high school here in Rockwood, I lost a very close friend and classmate in a car accident. A few months later, I lost another friend to suicide. We were all lost in how to cope with such a huge tragedy. While I had my friends and family to lean on, school was where we spent the bulk of our time, much like our own children. Through these unspeakable tragedies, tragedies, our school community let us know that they were there for us if we needed them, but that was the extent of it. Most of us had never experienced anything like that. I spiraled for a long time. It took me several years to come back. Some of my classmates weren't so fortunate. When I saw what happened in the past four days at Marquette was indescribable. There was so much love, empathy, compassion. Our children were shown that they are loved unconditionally. Extra counselors and social workers were available all day, every day to every student, no questions asked. The students were given free rein to leave their classroom to speak with someone at any given moment. If students needed to leave classes to be with their friends, they were allowed. Crisis counselors went door-to-door, hitting every single classroom to ask how every single student was doing. Teachers set everything aside and gave 100% of themselves to their students. Faculty and staff from all over the district showed up at Marquette. They were even available at my daughter's middle school. I want to thank all of the faculty and staff who filled in the holes so that more were able to be at Marquette. Somehow, our educators and counselors and social workers were there for our kids, all while processing their own grief. I've seen firsthand what happens when life just goes on and the grief and trauma are not addressed. The love and compassion that Rockwood and especially Marquette have shown our kids will save lives. These are very dark days, but the one shining light is seeing how Rockwood has wrapped their arms around our community and most importantly, our children. If I've been reminded of one thing this week, it's that our teachers, counselors, and social workers, they're so much more than their job title. They've helped me walk my son through something that a six-year-old should never have to go through. This is a partnership that I will cherish forever. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. And I hope you all have wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Erica Hagley, and after that, Sandy Wengler.
It states on the district website, under the parent involvement tab, that quote, "The most successful students are those who have the involvement of their parents and the more parents participate in a sustained way at every level in advocacy, decision-making, and oversight, the better the student's achievement," end quote. If this is truly the district's position, why then does it appear that the board goes out of its way to stifle parents' advocacy, decision-making, and oversight of their own children? Like we the parents do. I can assure you that when I make a decision about and for my children, I have done my homework and it is in their best interest. I will absolutely advocate for them and oversee any and all procedures and processes to ensure that their needs are being met mentally, physically, and emotionally at every level. The board's lack of support for our parental advocacy and decision-making and our oversight of our own children is hypocritically deafening. Please stop advocating against us as parents and share in helping us advocate for our children.
Next speaker, Sandy Wengler, and then, after that, Ava Dean.
Hi, I'm Sandy Wengler. My children went to school here and graduated from Eureka High School. Frankly, I thought they got a great education and overall, I thought Rockwood was a very good school district and really appreciated the education they got. But now I have to say, I'm very concerned about the direction our school district is going. As I sat and listened at the last meeting to excerpts of books that I felt were basically pornography, I realized I had something, had to say something. I do not want the thousands of dollars I pay for taxes each year to go towards teaching the children of my community how to perform various sex acts. I don't think that's the school's job. I'm not necessarily for banning books or censoring books, but there has to be a line in education. These books do not have a place in our schools. Where is the line? Why is it okay to show a cartoon of a penis and think that is better than just putting a Playboy magazine in the school library? These books have absolutely no place in our schools. So after last month's meetings, meeting, I had a lot of questions and I think a lot of other people here feel the same. It's been a month since the last meeting. There's been ample time for something to have been done. I'm not saying you did nothing. I have no idea. But how is the community supposed to know? Some of the questions I've been wondering are, for example, do any of you have middle school or high school children of your own? And is that okay with you? That you could just sit here and listen to this and be like, "Oh, no problem?" Or is there actually something going on behind the scenes? Maybe you haven't told us. You know, we want to give, we want to give you the benefit of doubt if you are working on these things. So I've been wondering also, um, um, did any of you review these books in the library? Have you done anything since this information was put out there? Was a task force maybe formed to see, you know, review what we're offering our children? To see if it's really as bad as it was said? Did you ask the parents for input about what they find acceptable? Maybe I'm in the minority. Maybe I'm one of the few that think this is ridiculous. I don't know, but if you, but you really don't either if you haven't asked the parents, if you haven't sent out something to ask their opinion. And if you haven't done those things, why not? I'm quite aware that if a Bible was put in the library or books about how loving and awesome and wonderful Jesus is, there would be great outrage and they would be removed immediately. I would like to think that the input from last month would at least cause enough concern to begin some kind of investigation. It's becoming quite obvious, or should be, from the election in Virginia, that parents are not okay with just letting schools or a government entity decide what their children should be taught. That's all I have. But before next meeting, I would respectfully ask that these questions be answered for our community. Don't just stay silent.
Next speaker, Ava Dean, and after that, Krista Taves.
Good evening, Rockwood School Board. I'm Ava Dean, a junior at Lafayette High School. And I come to you this evening to bring to your attention a student's perspective on masks. High schoolers who have completed their required PE credit get no mask break throughout the day. And with rain and weather varying, after-school activities get pushed indoors. There are some days, me being a person who has completed their PE credit, that I wear a mask for 10 hours a day. Even the teachers get mask breaks during their planning periods in their time in their classroom alone. Now, in my biggest opinion, all kids, elementary age to high school age, it's the emotional connection that we're struggling with between students and teachers. If you look at masks from an elementary child's view, they're not being able to understand and learn emotion. All they see are their friend's eyes, their teacher's eyes. Additionally, if you look at this from a high schooler's point of view, they've learned how to read and understand emotion. However, they can't. When their teacher's faces are blocked by a piece of fabric or paper, I've seen people without masks mentally hurt who have passed. The issue is getting worse as we can't emotionally engage with each other. A few months back, there was a Lancer Feed article addressing a dress code violation of showing shoulders, which resulted in a protest. In the article, Mr. Terry Harris, a director of Student Services, is quoted in saying, "If showing your shoulders is going to cause you to not be as depressed or as stressed or to alleviate suicidal thoughts, then let's have all students in the world show their shoulders." That's really how I feel, end quote. I have one question for you, the school board, who's supposed to be looking out for the children. If we can break a school dress code to reduce mental health issues, why are we not making masks optional to reduce mental health issues as well? Students see each other's pain and know when they need help. In the past, I've noticed someone's pain and knew when to talk to a counselor to get a wellness check on them. However, now we cannot. I hope having a student's perspective on this issue will help you understand what we're going through. I'm not saying that the option to wear a mask should be removed, but I believe the option should be given in the first place. Thank you.
Last speaker for the evening is Krista Taves.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Krista Taves. I live in Rockwood School District and I want to thank the school board for the priority you have given to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is so valued. I serve a large congregation of 500 members, Elliott Unitarian Chapel, and many of our parents, their, their children come here. And we are so thankful for what has been taking place in their classrooms. Some children are feeling safe, starting to feel safe for the first time, valued, truly appreciated for who they are at the deepest level. And we want to thank the administration, the teachers, and the school board for your fortitude and your perseverance in making this important change for our children. Lives are being saved. Thank you.